I want to be clear, as a moderator here, that we are not voting on any specific proposal. Obviously, there is a developer and there have been photos and so forth in the paper, but that is not our purpose tonight. Mr. Baghdadi?
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I echo your concerns, and I agree 100 percent with this last speaker and with Mr. Cohen in that regard. But this is not the forum to deliberate a project. It's not town meeting. It's at a hearing before the planning board, which will be advertised and published, and you are all welcome to attend. There is no project that's been submitted yet. No project can be submitted yet. The planning board is the forum for everybody's views, and all these questions will be deliberated at that point. The alternative, unfortunately, is you probably will not be able to get that type of a project in Cushing Square.
Mr. Harmon?
Charles Harmon, town meeting member, precinct one. I really have two things to say. One, I got to know John and Suzanne Robotham well because I was a lawyer for the landowner in the case that she referred to, the Leader Bank situation on Pleasant Street. And I would point out that that was an entirely different procedure. It was design and site plan review only, no special permits. The town had the ability, and the planning board put us through quite a wringer, actually, from my point of view, in terms of coming up with conditions on what we were going to do. But in that type of a process, they're limited to imposing reasonable conditions on the project, and that's a matter of interpretation what's reasonable. But in any event, they did not have the complete control they have in this situation. I was thinking about speaking on this article even before that was raised, but I thought I ought to clarify it. But, you know, just two years ago, we approved this zoning overlay district, in fulfillment of the long-range vision for the town, which is to have thriving business districts, and responsive to the need for increased valuation to take some of the burden off taxpayers from ever escalating taxes. And we've got all this talk about overrides and debt exclusions. And this is really, you know, it seems to me this is really a very simple proposition. Putting forward a single building block in a long process, which has got a long way to go, but this is just a essential but a very preliminary building block in that process. And it seems to me we are undermining what we only voted for two years ago if we don't approve this. And I would urge that the motion to be dismissed, motion to dismiss, be defeated, and that we vote for the project. Thank you.
Mr. Mercier?
Donald Mercier. Let's move the question.
Question has been moved. Seconded. Is there a second?
Yes, I can.
This is not debatable. Requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
What is the confusion? Clarification. Let me, okay. The motion has been made that essentially moves the question. That means terminating debate. On the motion to dismiss, let me be clear. Terminating debate on the motion to dismiss. If this fails, we'll continue the discussion on the motion to dismiss. If this passes, we will then vote on the motion to dismiss and then go back to the main motion. So this motion takes two-thirds. We're voting on the question of terminating debate on the motion to dismiss. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The motion passes. We have terminated debate on the motion to dismiss. We will now, passes by, as I'm supposed to say, two-thirds. We will now vote on the motion to dismiss. This is Mr. Cohen's motion. If this passes, obviously, we have dismissed this article. If it fails, we'll go back to the full article and the two motions. All those in favor of the motion to dismiss, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
The motion fails. We've now returned to the main article, and let's start with discussion. Continue discussion.
Chris Cohen, town meeting member, precinct eight. Just, Mr. Moderator, when Mr. Forenzy read the initial motion, he said dated May 3, 2008. I just would like the record clarified or corrected so that it says March 3, 2008?
Yes, March 3, 2008 is the correct date.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Joe White, precinct four. Excuse me. I spoke on the first motion at the last meeting, and I was curious if all those who spoke on the previous night are allowed to speak freely on this article?
Well, since this is your, yes, certainly as your first time tonight. Go ahead, Mr. White.
Oh, no, I, no, no. I'm not speaking on it. I'm asking if it's okay, because
It is okay.
Under the rules, I wasn't allowed to come up.
I think that it is all right. We've started this article again in a full fashion tonight.
This isn't for me. It's for all the people who spoke the other night.
I understand, and I'm saying, yes, it is all right. Ms. Bishop?
Carolyn Bishop, town meeting member, precinct one. Is the town going to receive any kind of compensation for the property in Horn Road that will revert to, it seems to me that's a piece of land that's quartered to a third as big as the parking lot, for which we will receive compensation, and I hate to give anything away that's worth money nowadays.
Mr. Forenzy?
That's going to be part of the negotiation process.
Please identify.
It's part of the, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. Angelo Forenzy, town meeting member, precinct three. That'll be part of the negotiating process when we get involved in both parcels.
So we could get money for that.
I'm expecting something.
Ma'am, go ahead.
Hi, Chris McVay, precinct three. And I want to just say basically a couple things. Mr. Moderator, I want to just say this is a much better time to be debating a zoning article, and I'm really glad that we're talking about it tonight versus 11:45 on Wednesday. And I appreciate that the town meeting members voted to listen to this last week. However, I'm currently working in Lexington, and their policy is no new zoning articles after 10 o'clock. So I think this is just a much better time.
I concur.
So, thank you for continuing. I want to just also say that I was the consultant who worked with the planning board a couple of years ago, and I was the planner who drafted this zoning ordinance. And it's exciting, actually, as a planner, to see some things move forward, because a lot of times you create the zoning, but nothing ever happens with it. And we have a potential developer here who has, you know, put forward some plans, which we don't have a whole lot of detail on yet, but I do have full trust in the planning board and their permit process and the ability for the neighbors to get involved and the residents of the town to get involved. I encourage everyone to go to all the planning board meetings. I also want to say that in part of this consulting project, working with the planning board, I conducted three months and several meetings with residents and business owners, and lots of input was taken. And the revitalization of Cushing Square is really what everybody wanted back then. And so I'm really happy to see things move forward here, and I hope you vote yes on this article, as it is the first step in the revitalization of Cushing Square, which is what all the residents at the meetings that I had ran wanted. So I hope you vote yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Deborah Hartman, town meeting member, precinct three. I want to stand in favor of this article, but I would like to comment. I know that we want to streamline the permitting process, but I think that the town committees need to figure out how to work better together. The zoning board, the planning board, and all of us are working hard to make Belmont a better place. What makes this decision even more difficult is the public squabbling between these two committees. And I hope that you guys can work it out in the future.
Ms. Mann?
Yes, Anne Mann, precinct four. I think it makes a difference, too, that the person that we're looking at to consider developing this property is a Belmont resident. It's much nicer. No? He's been hard on me around. Thanks.
Ms.? Mr. Forenzy?
His family is from Belmont. He has a long history.
Mr. Forenzy, can you?
I'm sorry. Mr. Moderator, Angelo Forenzy, precinct three. Should have stayed in bed, I think, today. He has a long history. His family has a long history in Belmont. But I think it's also important to note, and I just want this to be on the surface while people think about it. You know, very oftentimes, projects get permitted, and once they're permitted, the developer sells them off or flips them or does something like that. So that's another consideration that we have to deal with as we go through this process. This is a very, very large project. And it's unknown to me at this point whether or not one particular developer is going to have the resources necessary to develop a project like this. And there may be some point where he would consider bringing in other people. So I don't think we should make any assumptions. The only assumption I'm willing to make at this point is that we've got a development group or a number of development groups that we're going to be working with, and they're going to be looking at it from the perspective of what's in their best interest. And we have to be looking at it from the perspective of what's in the town's best interest and ensure that we have all of the protections in place to be sure that we get what we want.
Mr. Haglund for the planning board.
I would just like to briefly add that it was the planning board's intent, when the Cushing Square overlay district was presented, that the planning board would meet both the letter and the spirit of the section of the bylaw that Mr. Cohen was referring to. We believe that the Cushing Square overlay district is a concept plan. It addresses height, massing, parking, and all of the things that you would find in a concept plan. It is not even what designers would call a 25 percent design that you could take and look at the details of where the entrances and exits and the parking and the truck parking and the garage doors and all that sort of thing. It is not that. But it was our hope, and we felt like, given the very favorable vote that the town meeting gave to the Cushing Square overlay district, that we had, in fact, succeeded in passing, by a very large margin, the concept plan for Cushing Square. Thank you.
Ms. Mooney?
Mr. Moderator, G. Mooney, town meeting member, precinct six. I support both motions under this article. I just have a process question. I don't know if this is for Mr. Sklute or Younger, the town council. I wanted to know, since the parking lot is adjacent to this property that's had a history of underground materials, that whether or not within our process for conveying this property, the town will have to undergo any testing of our own site prior to conveyance. I would imagine that any banks supporting any developers. But I wanted to know whether or not the town itself has plans to investigate itself.
Mr. Sklute?
Jay Sklute, town planner. Not trying to put words in the mouths of the selectmen, but I would suggest that that's part of the negotiation, as to actually pays to check to make sure the property is clean.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosales?
Stephen B. Rosales, town meeting member, precinct eight. In the old adage of politics, strange bedfellows certainly rings true tonight, because never in my wildest dreams would I thought I would agree with Martin Cohen. And Martin, I actually do. I don't think you ever thought I'd agree with you, but...
Please continue.
I did second his motion to dismiss, and I rise to oppose both of these articles. I do that for several reasons. Several years ago, I opposed the overlay district. And at that time, I said if I wanted to live in Harvard Square, I would have moved to Cambridge. I also asked where all the cars were going to go, and I got sort of scoffed at. Said that would be taken care of. That would be taken care of. But for the last six years, I've had my little R office right there at 130 Trappella Road, right next to the parking lot, next to the vacant Foster's Flower Building, right below the vacant upstairs of 130 Trappella Road, right around the corner from the vacant CVS store, right around the corner from now, the hole in the ground that was put there in September of 2006 with nothing being done. And despite all the protestations and the "don't worry about it" attitude, that this is, we'll see what comes and what development is going to come forward and who's going to look at this, the fact remains is if my ears are hearing right, one man claims to own or control all of the parcels in the entire process, project, but for the two owned by me and you and the citizens and the taxpayers of this town. So despite their protestations, in fact, who is this being written for? Do you think someone is going to come and have another development concept plan, not owning one other piece of that property? We, as taxpayers, have two important pieces. Now, I've heard a lot of talk about we want easement, we want light and access. And I understand the neighbors. I'm one of the neighbors. And I heard those neighbors when Bill Skelly, a former selectman, at that table, along with me, wanted to put one floor on the building where I now am, across from Brothers Pizza. And I heard the neighbors then, and that failed miserably, because the neighbors thought it was too big. And he wanted to add eight total feet to that particular piece of property. And it got rejected. If you want air and light on Horn Road, if you want access to Horn Road, if the Horn Road neighborhood wants to get through here, here's an idea. Keep Horn Road. Don't give it away. Don't make somebody else rich so they can make something bigger and better. Because who gets the money? He does. McLean, I was sat at that table, 1995, 1998, 10 years ago, and we were talking about McLean and all the wonderful money it was going to bring. I don't see it. Has anybody gotten any money from that? These guys sure would like it. When is development going to happen? A hole is in the ground and been there for a year and a half. He took a building off the tax rolls and put, I don't know how many businesses, one there for probably 40 or 50 years, tops clean, is out of business. Now, this is supposed to be a conceptual plan. Well, to me, he's shown his cards. He's not a very good poker player because he's told the paper, and he's shown pictures. Now, if Mr. Cohen says 40,000 square feet is the Shaw supermarket down there, first line, 225,000 feet. That's maybe four and a half, five times as big as the Shaw supermarket in Cushing Square.
Mr. Rosales, we're not
I understand that.
...the project itself.
Well, I raise the question, who else is the project for?
I understand.
If he owns the rest of the property, he owns all the others. He can develop what he owns. We can keep our parking lot and figure out where we're going to put the cars. My clients, Brothers Pizza's clients, employees, people around the corner. There are 50 spaces. We did not build a fire station there because we need the parking. And instead, we moved it down the corner because we need the parking. We're encouraging new businesses. Spirited Gourmet came in. Where are those people going to park while this is being built? Lord knows when and for how long. And think of the traffic. Now, that's the death. And usually, I'm a big traffic guy, and I really care too much about it. But my office looks out on Trappella Road, which is about three and a half lanes wide in certain spots. Everybody makes it four, some pinches in one, but when you get to that spot, 7:00 to 9:00 in the morning, there's two lanes deep, running from front of the Starbucks all the way, well past the Brothers Pizza, well past Williston Road, where 230 cars are going to come out of. Where do you think the cars are going to go? They're going to go and go either on Trappella Road there? I don't know. Could probably put about four or five cars in line there. And take a look at the tenants that the unknown developer we're not supposed to worry about has said. He wants to put a grocery store on the second floor. A grocery store. I can't think of a more parking-intensive use. Take a look down at the Shaws. I don't know how many times around Thanksgiving you drive around and around and around and around. Well, those people are going to be driving around Cushing Square. And when they do that, they're going to be taking business away from Spirited Gourmet and the Ben Franklin and the other little shops. Because if there's no place to park, they're not going to go there. If there's no place to park to get that bagel, they're not going to buy two bagels the next day at the bakery. And I've also heard, oh, this is wonderful, because everybody's drunk the Kool-Aid, that this is smart growth, because there's a bus there. And that somehow people are going to get out of their cars and walk or ride a bike all around town. Well, I'm a cynic on that, and perhaps I'm wrong. But this is Belmont, Mass., home of three, four cars in every driveway. Most of the traffic I've suggested in the past is from us. You can agree or disagree, but go look at your neighborhood and see the number of cars in the driveway. And I don't think people, by and large, are going to get on a bike or get on the red line to live in 150 units. 150 units. You couple that with the 299 that are on planning down at the uplands. I don't know where you're going to put all the kids. I don't know where all the revenue is going to come from, because you'll probably have to build a new school. Now, this comes from, you know, I don't know where you're going to put all these people. So, you know, think very carefully. It seems to me that there are two big chunks. There's the chunk that has the old CVS that's long vacant, and then there's the chunk from the, I guess, the Starbucks, all the way around to the easy-do-it laundry. I think he can develop some pretty good stuff on what he already owns. I think he can do something pretty dynamic and economical for himself and for the town with what he owns. And the town can keep its road, which ensures easement and access and light and air, and the town can keep its parking lot to promote and make sure that there are places for people to park, whether they be employees or patrons of Cushing Square. Hopefully, a more vibrant Cushing Square. So, in keeping with our vision statement, the last principle says we want to have a sense of community, and it says we will preserve our small-town community atmosphere. And I suggest allowing these motions to permit some developer, who really is only one developer, I suggest, to build something that would rival Harvard Square, is not keeping within Belmont's small-town community atmosphere, and I urge you to vote no on both.
Yes, ma'am.
Barbara Pastrow, precinct three. I agree with Mr. Rosales. And one of the things that if you're conveying the parking lot and they're building something, where are people going to park? And as we all have seen the growth, McLean, it's, well, I can't keep saying it. But anyway, there's going to be hundreds of cars coming down from all those new developments coming through Trappella Road. Where are, I read it, there was going to be 200 apartments. You know, that's like 300 cars. So where are those 300 cars going to go? I just think Belmont's too built out, and it's already, I agree with Mr. Rosales, that we could just use the space we have.
Ms. Page, and then Mr. Mercier. Ms. Page?
Jennifer Page, precinct three. I have two questions, and I would like to comment on each of them after I've asked the question. The first question is, how many parking spaces are in the Belmont Center parking lot?
We have an answer to that?
Belmont Center. How many parking spaces are in the Belmont Center parking lot?
Somebody know her name?
Apparently, the answer is 148.
Ms. Fallon?
148. Jennifer Fallon, precinct member, precinct, town meeting member, precinct one. Sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Fallon.
Ms. Page?
Well, I do support this project, but I would have to say that one of my concerns about it has to do with the parking, the requirement that we would preserve only 50 spaces of parking. And it seems to me that if we are anticipating that there will be an anchor store, I just can't quite imagine somebody who owns an anchor store saying, yes, 50 parking spaces that we will share with the rest of the center will suffice for our needs. Am I misunderstanding how this?
May I make clarification to that?
Ms. Fallon, please.
Jenny Fallon, town meeting member, precinct one, and chairman of the planning board. Jennifer, the 50 spaces would be reserved to replace the spaces that are currently in the lot, but that does not cover the spaces which the planning board would require for the new businesses and the new residences. So there would be a lot more parking than 50 spaces in the whole complex, and the new businesses would be taken into account as the planning board discusses the project.
Thank you, Jenny.
Ms. Page, did you want to make a statement?
Yes, I did want to make another question, but it looks like Mr. Baghdadi was also going to comment.
If I may.
Mr. Baghdadi?
Mr. Moderator. We've been trying to resist talking about a single project here, because really, that's not what's before us, a single project. But against, I can't resist anymore. So I want to say just one thing. Whether it be 150 units, or 200 units, or 20 units, or 50 units, we just don't know until the plans are submitted to the planning board, and we and the neighbors and you are all able to comment on them. A developer can submit plans showing whatever he or she wants, but until it makes it through our approval process, it's not final. And for that reason, we really should resist talking about any single mammoth project.
Ms. Page, did you have a comment?
Yes. He made a good point, but it seems to me as though the 50 parking spaces was part of Mr. Sklute's presentation that was supposed to convince us to vote for it, which I plan to do. I have one other question, however, and that is, am I correct in my memory that when we voted for the overlay two years ago, that part of, one of the conditions of the overlay was that there would be a requirement that any construction built under it would be required to be LEED certified? LEED certified? Was there a strong reference about sustainability of some kind?
Yes, there was a recommendation.
Ms. Fallon, do you want to identify?
I'm sorry. Jenny Fallon. I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator. Jenny Fallon, town meeting member, precinct one. Yes, the overlay district does include a recommendation that a building be built to LEED certification. I do not believe it's a requirement.
All right. Well, that's enough to have another reason for voting yes. Thank you.
Mr. Mercier?
Donald Mercier, precinct eight. I move the question.
A question has been moved. In other words, terminating debate. So this is not amendable. Takes a two-thirds vote. If we terminate debate, we will then go to the motions. If we don't, discussion will continue. Two-thirds motion. All those in favor of terminating debate, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The motion fails. Debate will continue. Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Dennis Winford, precinct six. Bit of credentials. Urban planner, member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I actually work in Harvard Square. Actually worked for Harvard University, helping plan their big campus. But anyway, that's some credentials, a bit, for people that don't know me. Harvard Square actually has about 100,000 gross square feet in Holyoke Center alone, okay? This is not going to be Harvard Square at all. I look forward to a place where I can walk with my family to have dinner, walk home, and not be in the car. A place that actually draws me into Cushing Square, a place that's comfortable, nice, something to do several things at once, other than just go to dinner, get in my car and leave, maybe a toy store. There's a lot of things if you close your eyes and have an imagination about what could be here. I don't want to live in a town that closes its eyes and thinks, jeez, it really should just stay the same. I am completely in support of Article 20. I was completely in support of the overlay district. I believe that this article gives us the leverage to work with a developer to get what we want. It is leverage. It's not giving anything away. We are participating as a partner with the developer. We're going to be able to ask for things that we wouldn't ever be able to ask for if we didn't pass this article. So I please hope that you all vote yes. Thank you.
Roger Rubel, precinct five. I'm not quite sure why the discussion has to do with what the development is going to be and whether you like the development or you don't like the development. The question is, who's going to have the authority over disposing of these properties? If you think that the planning board and the selectmen should have the authority to make those decisions, then vote for it. If you think that town meeting should retain the right to make that decision, then vote against it. against it.
Mr. Sklute, and then Mr. Forenzy.
I just want to make two points of clarification. First one is, someone earlier said that these two parcels were needed in order to go to four stories. That's not accurate. All you need is a parcel size greater than 15,000. So even if these two parcels are voted down tonight, four stories could still be built on the remaining parcels. The second thing, on the question on the LEEDs, the bylaw says, to the extent feasible, building and site design shall incorporate best practices in energy efficiency, environmental protection, and stormwater management, shall address current leadership in energy and environmental design, LEEDs, standards, or other comparable standards as promulgated by the U.S. Green Building Council, and shall incorporate low-impact development site design components. So in answer to Jennifer's concern, yes, we were also concerned about LEED standards.
Mr. Forenzy.
Mr. Moderator. Angelo Forenzy, Precinct 3, town meeting member. I think it's important to remember that, I think the point that Jay was making was one that I intend to make as well, and that is that the person that owns the other pieces of property, in fact, I believe owns most of the other pieces of property, is free to develop those properties as he sees fit, either under the overlay district, unlike what we did in Our Lady of Mercy, any parcel within the overlay district outline can be developed per the overlay district guidelines. It can be petitioned for development of the overlay district guidelines. However, if we don't have the ability, we being the board of selectmen, do not have the ability to negotiate or put together an RFP, right, so that a developer, a potential developer, and it may in fact be the same guy, it may not. I can, I can envision some scenarios, Mr. Rosales, that would be a different developer that would come in and want to develop just the parking lot. But the developer, I could envision a scenario where the developer would sit down and say, he's going to determine how much he's willing to pay for this parking lot. He's got to, he's got to determine how much having access to Horn Road is going to be worth to him. And I believe the process he's going to go through to do that would be to evaluate what his various options are, including the option to develop just the parcels he currently owns. He's got to go through that process. But until such time, that he has some idea as to what it's going to cost him to get access to either the parking lot or the Horn Road parcel, we will never know what the options are. We'll, we'll never see that option, because there is no way he can put together a proposal if he doesn't know what it's going to cost him to have access to that land. So this is just the first step in what we're, it's the first step in the process. I think everybody assumes that if the selectmen are given the board, are given the right to negotiate or to go out for RFP on this process, that we're just going to roll over and say, okay, what do you want? Take it. That's good. That's fine. Let's go. That's not going to happen. Belmont's not that kind of community. This town meeting wouldn't allow us to do it, the neighbors wouldn't allow us to do it, and we on the board wouldn't want to do it, nor do I believe the planning board would want to do it. We need to see what the options are. The only way we're ever going to see what those options are is by having the right to go out for an RFP on those two parcels. Thank you.
Mr. Colton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Roger Colton, town meeting member, Precinct 6. And I rise to speak in favor of Article 20 tonight. I'm a member of a group called the Belmont Housing Trust, and one task that the Belmont Housing Trust does for the town of Belmont is to prepare what's called the Consolidated Plan to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. The purpose of the Consolidated Plan is to identify the housing needs of the town of Belmont. In Belmont's last Consolidated Plan, one significant housing need that was identified for the town of Belmont was the lack of small housing units. Belmont is not only a town of homes, it is a town of large homes. If, even setting aside the question of affordability, if an aging household wants to downsize in Belmont, there are simply too few one- and two-bedroom, small housing units for them to downsize to. Article 20 provides the opportunity to begin to address that housing need. Article 20 provides the opportunity to produce small housing units within a walkable distance to essential community services and community businesses. Quite aside from providing its fair share of affordable housing because of the applicability of the inclusionary zoning bylaw, Article 20 is good housing policy generally. It is not only a good economic policy for Cushing Square, but in addition, it will be good policy for our town's aging population as well. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Zendem Ancini, Precinct 6. I don't mean to belabor a point here, but I've worked in Cushing Square for 30 years, and obviously, we haven't passed this, and the new development has not come to pass, but it is a horrendous place to park. Day and evening, just be my guest and try and find a parking spot. And although I am in favor of this proposal, I am extremely concerned about the parking. We recently moved to Belmont Center a year ago, and everyone said to me, oh, wait till you get to Belmont Center. You'll be sorry. You won't be able to find a parking spot. Give me Belmont Center any day. The parking is really difficult in Cushing Square.
Ms. Singler.
Judy Singler, Precinct 6. Point of clarification about the relationship between the parcels. If the board, the next step if we pass this is that the board of selectmen would issue an RFP for the parking lot, correct? What if I buy the parking lot, and you're wowed by my proposal, and it gets through site plan review? I don't own the other parcels. I buy it, I get through. What happens to Horn Road? And who gets?
Wait, can somebody respond? Mr. Baghdadi.
Sammy Baghdadi, Planning Board, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. You are correct. If the town is wowed by your proposal, you get awarded the bid, you go through site plan approval, you get special permits from the planning board, nobody appeals you, your conveyance goes through, and Horn Road gets discontinued, that means that the owner of property on both sides of Horn Road would own up to the center line, which would be the same individual.
Not, not me.
Not you.
But the person who owns the, if the parcel's in green, if it's someone who owns just the CVS piece or just the other piece?
Person who owns this property and the person who owns these properties would each get to the center line. Since it's the same person, the same individual would own that whole area.
But we have no guarantee at this point that one person will own all of it. Correct?
Would, would own all of what?
That all those green properties.
I believe.
At the time it's developed.
I don't know for a fact, but I do believe the same individual either owns or has options to purchase those properties around Horn Road.
All of those things. So if I wow you with my site plan, he gets the easement on Horn Road?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Sir.
Steve Carlini, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5, Horn Road resident and member of the CSNA Association. I think it's very important that we do understand Article 20 and that we do approve and vote for it. I think it's also very important that we don't design or try to design what is going to happen there. I myself are as concerned about the articles we saw in the paper, the very preliminary drawings we saw from the developer. But the point of this is to ensure that the residents, the town, the selectmen, the leadership we have put through in those boards, that we have elected, that we allow them to do their job. And I also think the most important aspect is, when these public meetings are held, that us, the residents, not just the neighbor, but the entire town, if you have concerns, we show that, and we make those points held, and we make those people held accountable. If we're worried about parking, we have to talk about that. If we're worried about four stories, which we are all worried about, we continue to hammer those points at home so they are known by the board. And I think the biggest voice we have as residents is looking those people directly into the eye and saying, I'm for development, but I need scale and mass reduced to keep the character of our town sustained, and that's why we've moved to Belmont, that's why we raise our children in Belmont, and they go to our schools. If we do develop this out of scale, it is also going to be the benchmark for the rest of the town. So the development here, which is going to be the first that has gone forward, has to be the most rigorous, has to be the most scrutinized. We have to hold everybody accountable, but we have to do that in a public forum, once we allow plans to be put forth that we can criticize, because if we look at what's going to happen at Winters, what's going to happen at maybe Ben Franklin, what is going to happen in Waverly Square, other parts of our town? Everybody's going to say, well, three years ago, this was the benchmark that was set forth in Cushing Square, then they're going to use that as their design guidelines going forward. So I, as a resident, am more concerned about scale, sizing, parking than most, and I hope that we all attend those meetings and make those voices heard. So when we see sketches in developments or hearsay in the coffee shops, that's not the plan, and we have to hold our town and our elected officials responsible to ensure that those are not the developers' concerns, that they're the concerns of the residents and the town first. I very much agree with the person who spoke earlier about the concerns we have, but I think the public process is the correct place to answer those concerns, not just rejecting a plan so that nothing gets started. We have to move forward as a town. Right now, we have a hole in the ground, you know, we have waste, we have buildings that can't be developed. I, living on that corner, hate walking to Cushing Square right now, because it adds nothing to my, to the value of my life and to my neighborhood. I want something that is very proactive for us to live there. Thank you.
Ms. Scally.
Mary Ann Scally, Precinct 2. I want to thank you, Mr. Moderator, for allowing us to have this discussion tonight. I think it's very important. I have a question, and I've heard it time and time again, about the selectmen negotiating the properties. We hire many consultants to do many things. Do we have a real estate person who can value the properties? What? Conkad Avenue that you negotiated, Mr. Younger.
Well, whoa. Let's, uh...
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Tom Younger, Town Administrator, also resident of Precinct 5. First, as a response, I did not negotiate a process on Conkad Ave. The value of that house was determined by, I believe, what was appraisal minimum value, and that's, and the deal was sold by the town, and the town meeting had approved that, I believe, also. Second of all, we do have a certified appraiser who is our assessor. We've also used outside appraisers where we need also for those properties. So we would have an appraised value for both properties done by a certified appraiser.
Ms. Scally.
Would it be a good idea to involve the town, realtors in town, who think that they know exactly what's going on in town? They sell houses and they buy houses. And I'm concerned about that, because we need all the tax dollars we can, and I really hate to see us sell any public property unless it's absolutely necessary, and if so, let's get the top dollar for it.
Mr. Forenzy.
I would, Angelo Forenzy, Mr. Moderator, Angelo Forenzy, Precinct 3. I'd like to remind the town meeting that on the Fairview Howardview property, we did in fact go out and hire an independent assessor in addition to the assessment we had from our in-house assessor, and that property was valued at $400,000 and sold for $615,000.
Ma'am, on the right, or I think before, well, go ahead, and I'll...
Anne Marie Lambert, Precinct 8. First of all, a question. Has the process that's gone through so far explicitly requested feedback from the existing businesses in Cushing Square? Or received same?
Ms. Fallon.
Jenny Fallon, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1, member of the planning board. We solicited input carefully from business owners and property owners in Cushing Square when we were creating and passing the Cushing Square overlay district. The planning board does not yet, has not yet held any public process for this parcel, because there is no project before us. So until we get the project, we can't start the process. When we do start the process, there will be, everyone involved in Cushing Square will be invited to the hearings.
Thank you. And my comment, I, I rise in favor of the motion, and I'm personally very excited about the prospects that have been discussed, but I'm choosing that as part of the, being in favor of this motion, that town meeting should not be examining any proposals or looking at proposals, that is, for the process. As, you know, my constituents in Precinct 8, as their representative, I think I have to choose the right balance between taking too much risk and not enough with the process, between having too many parties involved and not enough parties involved, between moving too fast and moving too slow, between trusting procedures too much and not enough. And I rise in favor, I choose to trust the planning board, to trust the neighbors, and to trust the process and the overlay districting that we passed two years ago, and I'm in favor of the motion.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Julie Barton from Precinct 3, and I want to start by saying that I'm very supportive of smart growth. I am supportive of even a mini Harvard Square in Cushing Square. But I just, I have a point of clarification that I'd like to understand. So to return to the hypothetical of the parking lot proposal that's been, that's wowed the planning board, everyone's very supportive of it, and the property is conveyed, and then the easement, I understand Horn Road would discontinue, the easement would revert, and the owner of the properties on either side would get back the property that was part of the easement? That is the same person currently, right? At that point, would that person be able to develop the rest of that property without the leverage that we have over the parking lot property? Or without, would they be able to propose a project that would, that we would have less leverage than we do on the parking lot property proposal?
Mr. Baghdadi.
Sammy Baghdadi, Planning Board, Precinct 4, Town Meeting Member. One point which my colleagues reminded me of, which I failed to disclose before, is this vote is still subject to the selectmen retaining a pedestrian easement, so there will always still be an easement for the town. I, I understand. Okay, I understand that's not your question. Okay, but, but, but there will still be an easement over that discontinued portion of Horn Road. Okay, number one. Number two, subject to that easement, would the owner of these properties be able to develop over that portion of Horn Road, or?
Right.
Yes. Yes.
And without, so my point is, we have, as we've learned through all these discussions, a fair amount of leverage in terms of how the parking lot property is developed, correct? Because we've got these two, within Article 20, we've got these two motions that sequence that, and that gives, you know, and I understand that, I think we all understand that. But my point is that it seems to me there's a disincentive for only developing the parking lot, because if that easement reverts to the owner of the property, and he or she, I assume it's, I think it's a he right now, ends up owning a big part, we will not have the same amount of leverage over that development as we do over the parking lot.
He would still, Sammy Baghdadi, Town Meeting, Precinct 4, and Planning Board, he would still have to come before the planning board for design and site plan review and for, and for special permits. The only thing we as a town really have leverage over is the municipal parking lot, because we own it. And the added leverage, remember, he can... Complete development plans. So if it's that same, if it is that same developer, then those plans would include that parking lot before, before the parking lot can be conveyed. And, and you know, that is probably when I would think we would be most concerned, because number one, that would increase, that could increase the scope of the development. More land increases the scope, okay? And, you know, it's, it's town property. So I think, I think that's, that's when the town would have most interest in, in that parking lot property. Would you like to add something?
Mr. Sklute.
Jay Sklute, Town Planner.
Jay Sklute, town planner. There's a distinction between the leverage of, we don't have additional leverage because we are selling the parking lot. We have no additional leverage on what gets developed there. It goes through the same planning board process as any one of those lots and has to be approved. Right now, that parcel right there can be developed to four stories and has to go through the planning board process. Someone could come in and propose four stories on the parking lot. It's a big enough area to do that, and the planning board process would still be ruling on that. The conveyance would not occur until the planning board approves the project. So the leverage is the planning board approval and that entire public process. The selectmen, you know, I know you tend to think that because you own it, you have greater leverage, and indeed, they could write things in there. But even Horn Road, okay, yes, the ownership would revert, but only if an agreeable pedestrian easement is negotiated. If that doesn't happen, the ownership doesn't revert.
Is that inadequate?
May I just-
Yes, you may.
My point is only that as we talk about this, I think for many of us, we're thinking about that leverage, which I entirely understand, but we think about it sort of extending to that whole block. And that would work if the same developer who owns, as I understand it, a fair number of those parcels also ended up with the parking lot. That would probably give us a fair amount of leverage throughout that whole part of the overlay district. Fair enough? Because theoretically, one developer would want to probably incorporate a lot of that altogether into one development. So my point is only that if, so if it's a different developer who gets the parking lot, we just don't have that leverage over as large a part of that section as we would if it were the same developer.
Mr. Forenzy.
Mr. Moderator, Angelo Forenzy, precinct three, town meeting member. The only additional leverage a developer could have if he incorporated the parking lot with the rest of the parcels is that he may be able to put forth a better proposal incorporating all of the land than a developer that only owns a portion of it. We don't have any additional leverage per se because we're selling the parking lot. We can put restrictions on the sale of the parking lot, but there is no, we can't ask him to do more or less because he's including the parking lot as opposed to not including the parking lot. But because he has the parking lot, he may be able to put forth a more attractive proposal.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Kevin Cunningham, precinct four. I have three questions. One bears on what Ms. Barton, is that the name, was just asking, and it's a point of clarification for me. As things currently stand, without this being passed yet, this, the land in Cushing Square is subject to three possible development zoning bylaws. One is the Cushing Square overlay, another is the underlying zoning, and the other is 40B. Is that correct? Under the underlying zoning currently, the developer of, say, the CVS lot could choose to develop that without the special permit process of the Cushing Square overlay. Whereas, we're saying from clause B of the second part of Article Two, that no matter what they choose to develop the parking lot under, we will have a design and site approval process. So we have more oversight to that development by clause B of this statement than we do of the other parcels. Is that correct?
Mr. Baghdadi.
I, Sammy Baghdadi, town meeting member, precinct four. I believe that a project of that scale on, say, the CVS lot parcel, okay, number one, would probably require design and site plan review of the planning board, okay?
But if they chose to do two separate, smaller things, then they go by the, and they choose to do the normal zoning, not the Cushing Square, they get the normal process?
Yes, they could choose not to go under the-
Right, and that's, I think, that bears on what she was asking.
Yes, they can.
Okay.
Yes. But, but, but you know, you're right. It would have to be considerably smaller scale, yes.
Sure, fine.
Yes. And, and as was raised before, if it was more than 40,000 square feet under the underlying, they would have to come to town meeting to get approval, concept plan.
Good. Thank you for that clarification. So what I see, the main difference in the second of the two motions that we're dealing with that really makes the difference, as far as I can see, is apart from other thing else, is item B, there will be design and site plan approval by the planning board for any improvement of the said land, no matter what the proposal is. Any proposal for the parking lot land will require this process.
Yes.
That's the special safety net that I see in here.
Yes.
And therefore, I approve of this, part B. Okay, my second point is relating to part one-
Can I, one more point of clarification? As our bylaw is currently written, the underlying zoning, any development in excess of 5,000 square feet requires a special permit from the zoning board.
Clear. Five thousand then?
Five thousand. So even a smaller scale development would still have that type of scrutiny.
Sure.
Yes.
My second question is, so the second of the two motions I totally get with because of this safety net, the notion that the first motion is tied to the second notion, I don't understand that. I cannot understand why we can't say, well, let me ask it a different way. If somebody makes a proposal tomorrow based on part two of this, what's the minimum possible time before the lot could be conveyed?
The parking lot?
Yes. The minimum possible time. How quickly could it go through?
Well, between RFP and bids and evaluation, you are probably talking about eight months, maybe?
So I don't see why we are voting on the first one. Why don't we just leave it to the time that that, that, that conveyance occurs or a couple months before and ask town meeting again? I don't see why, what is the urgency of voting this? And also, secondly, why is it dependent? So, for example, let's say it takes three years to do it, or for some reason, or a year and a half. At that point, this, according to this, the land, the Horn Road will be discontinued no matter what if an easement proposal is accepted, whether or not any other conditions exist, anyone changed their mind. It says it's going to stop existing. I don't see the dependence. I don't see why they're connected.
Because in the possibility that a single developer acquires all these parcels, it was a way to get maximum leverage and to give the residents maximum comfort that if there's going to be one large development on all these parcels encompassing Horn Road and the parking lot, that we would have maximum control over that. So that if a developer, if it was the same developer and that developer wasn't happy with what was going on with the parking lot, they couldn't just say, "Well, fine. I've got Horn Road, you know, I don't need your approval on the parking lot. I will do something of right and focus my development just on this area." So in the event that a single developer was able to amass the entire property, including the parking lot, we wanted maximum leverage and control on the process, and the way we could do that was to tie the discontinuance of Horn Road to the transfer of the parking lot.
Why couldn't it have said, "No decision will be made about the discontinuance until..."
Because then it would have to come back to town meeting again.
Well, that's fine. We're perfect, then we'd have a better sense of what would possibly go there and the traffic patterns and all the considerations. Right now, we're being asked to discontinue a road before we know anything about the nature of the scope of the thing, how the traffic. We can't make a decision about the traffic passage here, but, but this is about the discontinuance of road. I'm just wondering why it's connected.
Mr. Forenzy, and then we can come to the third question.
Mr. Moderator, Angelo Forenzy, precinct three. If we don't include it, then we'll never know what proposals would, could be made that included it. He can't make the proposal without knowing whether or not he has access to it. He can't put together any proposal unless he knows whether he's going to have access to the road or not.
This is the developer who currently owns those parcels.
This is any developer that owns those parcels.
Correct.
Could not put forth, the developer decides to sell it tomorrow, could not put forth a proposal that incorporated that road unless he has access to that road.
That's your reasoning for it.
That's our reasoning for it, yes.
Third, just third, I hope it's kind of pretty brief. The, for any of the developments here, my wife has raised the question about this, like, maybe 150 more apartments or whatever, and a lot more children presumably, what is the process for assessing the impact of that? We talked about parking and traffic. What's the, what's the assessment of the impact of that on the schools and how do we deal with that? What is the, what's in the, the planning board just decides where to go. Is it part of the developer's proposal to say, "Here's how it will affect children and schools"? Is it, it's town? Who gets to say about that and when does it happen?
Everybody does.
Mr. Forenzy, do you want to just-
Yeah, yes, everybody does as part of the planning board process. The developer will have some estimates in terms of what he thinks the impact will be. The town will evaluate those assets, estimates. The planning board will evaluate those estimates. We'll look at what's happened to other developers and make judgments.
It's part of the planning board process?
As part of the planning board process, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
Ms. Ogilvy.
Lydia Ogilvy, precinct one, member of the Historic Commission. We know that the selectmen have worked very hard on this, and particularly the planning board. I think one of the problems is the town is reeling from the McLean development and sort of overwhelming, and you are to allay any fears that you really do control all of this, and I would urge you to lower the scale. You don't need four, four stories, and be very tight about the parking lot. Thank you. Particularly, the Historic Commission is interested in the so-called SS Pierce Building, and we would hate to see it go down, but we'd like to see it tucked into the, tucked into the plan nicely. Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Mr. Moderator, Bob McLaughlin, precinct two. Just a couple of points. If anyone hasn't noticed, the economy isn't very good right now. And if anyone hasn't noticed, it's a very difficult time to borrow any money from any banks. And as I listen to this proposal, I have never seen a permit process that is so skewed in favor of the town, asking a developer to come in and spend tens of thousands of dollars on architectural plans. And if the planning board is arbitrary and capricious, apparently, you can't even appeal. The completely stopped, complete absolute control by the town. Tonight's articles merely are to get this process started. What kind of a signal are we sending to not just this developer, but to any developer if we can't get by this first article? I'm afraid we're going to lose this developer, let alone scare away the rest of the developers. I'm going to vote in favor of this, and I hope everybody else does.
Joe White, precinct four. I have two points. One is if this process takes more than a year, we're talking about a different select board possibly, we're talking about a different planning board possibly, so it's not eight members, it could be eight different members. And someone brought up, it was brought up recently, the Harvard Law and Fire Station and its assessment. And for that reason alone, I can't support this article and give my permission or the support, this meeting's permission to these number of people, who, some of whom we don't know yet. Thank you.
Ms. Hildenberg.
Joanna Hildenberg, precinct six, town meeting member. You know, when this, we started debating this article, I thought, "Well, you know, this is fine. I'm sure that they've done all their homework," and, you know, I was pretty much in favor of it. As we've gone through the evening, though, we've heard a lot of kind of good reasons why we really shouldn't give up this parking lot. I'm in favor of development in Cushing Square. I would certainly like to see some of the ISORs improved. I don't have an opinion one way or the other about Horn Road. I'm leaving that to my neighbors who are, who abut that area and who can make a better decision than I can as to whether or not we want to give up the easement. But I have yet to be convinced that this whole, whole project, this whole article is really in the town's best interest. We've talked about that parking lot for years and years and years. I would really hate to, hate to see that sold. I think I'm going to vote against this article. Thank you.
Yes, sir, on the right.
Douglas Maceda, precinct eight. I'm impressed with the creativity of putting this article together. I think it's great. And perhaps on the lighter side, I just want to add that I live over by the Windburg School, you know, like a stone's throw from Route Two, about as far as you can get from Cushing Square. I'm completely out of shape. I rode my bike today to Cushing Square. It was fantastic. I encourage everybody to get out there, ride your bikes. I look forward to a future where lots of my fellow townsfolk are riding their bikes and walking to Cushing Square.
Mr. Duffy.
Martin Duffy, precinct one, town meeting member, and I'm glad I stood up before Mr. Hyam did because I think I know what's going to happen next.
Go ahead.
I rise in support of both sections of Article 20 and in compliment to the hard work that the people assembled here have put into the design and thinking about it. We voted on this overlay district, fully warned. There are a number of issues here of great concern to a number of very concerned citizens. This is a delicate process that we're entrusting to our town leaders to care for, the ones who are here now and the ones who are going to be elected a year from now or two years from now. But boy, we need something like this, and we need this desperately, and I applaud the vision, particularly of Jay Sklute and the hard work he does every day to keep things moving along, and I am fully for this article. You've been fairly warned. I am for it, though.
Mr. Hyam.
James Hyam, precinct one. Move the question.
Surprise to all. This takes a two-thirds vote to end debate. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
It's approved by more than a two-thirds vote. Debate is terminated. We now vote on the two motions under Article 20. The first motion is the discontinuance of Horn Road, and that requires a majority. Are we clear on what we're voting? All right, Horn Road discontinuance. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
The motion carries. We now vote on the conveyance, the parking lot, and this requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Carries by two, more than two-thirds. Mr. Forenzy, a motion to dissolve?
Mr. Moderator, Angelo Forenzy, precinct three. Move that the annual town meeting be dissolved.
All those in favor? Okay.